To add a closed session for personnel and for conference and legal counsel regarding anticipation litigation. Is that correct? Is that okay with the rest of council?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we will go into closed session afterwards then. So now I will call to order the Warricka City Council Special Meeting on Homelessness. All rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you're seated, please silence your cell phones too. Alright, so we called this meeting and we'll get this all rolling here. Mean has been placed on agenda to allow councilwoman staff and public to participate via teleconference through the executive order nine N nine and N twenty-nine dash twenty. There'll be limited public access to the council chambers. Members of the public may also join in via speakers. During this call, you may press star nine to raise your hand to ask for speak during the meeting. Speakers will ask to be identified themselves. Okay, now we're going to go into public comments. This is time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of this meeting except to refer to staff that they've prepared a report and place it on future agenda. If you're here to make a comment on a specific item, which we have one specific item tonight, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and milliaddress so that the city staff can respond in regard to the comments. We'll provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name, address if you do not decide to do so. Alright, and so we're going to do this, which is the talking about homelessness and the possible location. And this is an alternate location and we're going to have future meetings on this also. The next one would be on June, when we decide on that. What's that? Seventeenth also. So we'll have a future meeting on this also. So Steve, you want to start off on this or you want to start off on this?
Well, I can start off on it and just kind of mention where we are. On June first, the council discussed urban campground locations and discussed a site near the city service center in front of the trees from the decommissioned rest area campground. There are also other city-owned sites and we have maps of the, some of those candidate sites that we've talked about at least at the staff level to look at. We also have a parcel on Foothill Drive adjacent to the Beacon of Hope. It's going to remember to get the address in, but it's basically on South Foothill between the railroad station and the Beacon of Hope building on South Foothill that we have been doing some environmental work on and that may be a location as well. And then there's a series of meetings set up for that purpose. So we do have those, we do have different maps of different locations and we also have the ability, I assume, to pretty much hone in on any location within the city using our geographic information systems. Sometimes it takes a little while to get there, but generally speaking, we can do that. So we do have some information when the time is appropriate that involves the site next to the service center, in particular the gallery. And then we did talk about some of the other issues around that and its impact on the city yard as well.
Okay. So do you want to start off with that and do that? Or I think we probably should make first one state, you know, statement obviously right off the bat, just so everybody's familiar with the court ruling. Back in December, there was a, the Ninth Circuit Court had a ruling that unless we have, as a government and agency, city agency, unless we have a place to take or send the homeless to, we cannot kick them off of public property, any city property or any of that, that they, we can get sued. We cannot basically inconvenience them. So in other words, if we take them and say you must move off the city property and you, we were going to move you outside of the city limits or someplace else, then that's an inconvenience and we can get sued on that. And it's happened, it's happened and numerous cities have gotten sued over this and they've lost every case that's went before them. So you have to be real careful on how we do this. That's why we're having this discussion tonight, trying to figure out a location that's suitable for everybody that has the least impact on residential, has the least impact on businesses. And that's where, like I said, that's where our discussion is tonight on that, to try to fulfill those needs for everybody. And it's, it's no matter what you do, there's no perfect location. But we definitely need to come with, with the open mind and figure out what that means. One of those things is our biggest concern right now, and that's why we have a fire chief here, is fire concerns. Right now, we're entering a huge time of year, which is drought year, that's probably one of the worst we've probably seen in Warricka. And so that's our major concern right now is the safety, fire safety of our citizens of Warricka. So that in mind, I just wanted to let everybody know that that's not something that we can just throw around, that we have to do something about. We have to be, do our due diligence and make sure that we have a proper location for the homeless to go to.
Mr. Mayor, can we, we also add that what we're looking at right now is a short-term fix.
Correct.
We're looking at a temporary replacement so we can get some fire mitigation done, some, some, some brush and some things done to protect the city. So we have to move homeless in order to do that. And when you move them, again, the, basically what the Boise decision said that it's unconstitutional to do that unless you have another place to put them. They have rights. But we're looking at temporary right now.
Correct.
And we're working on a long term.
We're working on both. That's what these series of meetings are going to be about. It's a temporary location and a permanent location where we can have that in mind for long-term. And then we'll work on other issues. This is, this needs to be concerns of all the citizens. And I'm glad that we have a good crowd here today. It's really nice to see. I wish we had a big crowd on every city council meeting because it would be a lot, make our job a lot easier knowing the direction that we need to go and citizens put their input in. So, so I thank you, everybody for coming. I really do. So that in mind, Steve, you said you have some information on the first proposed lot or the first proposed area that we discussed?
Would you like us to start with that, the, the site near the service center?
Correct.
Have we met up? Sure.
Yes, please.
I could have Matt Bray, our public works director, come on up and make the magic happen. So for the sake of the audience, what we're doing is passing out some information each, that shows the site location. We're going to be able to put this up on the screen, right?
Yes. Grab the screen with your mouse and drag it down. The other way. Go, go, go to the city yard, north end of town. Yeah. A little bit more down. The other way. Zoom in right here for me. Okay, so this is the grove of trees that was proposed, Mr. Mayor, I believe, at the city yard. So for, this is the intersection here, the gas station will drive out Highway two sixty-three and hang a ride into our municipal services center. Grove of trees here, and then we have the man gate that comes into the yard where employees report in the mornings. And then the equipment that we have in the wastewater. So what I just passed out to you, that technical memo that I asked for, water man to Ross Taylor to write out. I could either read it for the record or hit the high points. Like.
I'll go ahead and read so the audience knows what we're looking at.
So this is from Ross Taylor, the water man. Part of the public works, random to myself. This is what I'd asked on Tuesday for a short pause and a possibility for us to dive in by, by today. So this is what we had promised. I'll just dive into it for you. The North Well is the city's only backup water supply. And if it were to be brought online and unable to pump water, Deer Creek would extend the period. The North Well is not a true well, as we all think about it, a well, but a normal fifty-foot sanitary seal and other protective measures to protect it from surface contamination. The North Well functions as an infiltration gallery and is regulated as surface water rather than groundwater due to its risk of surface contamination. The infiltration gallery consists of six hundred feet of five-foot pipe laid horizontally in the direction of the closed homeless campsite. The, I'll show you up here a little bit. The pipe is nineteen feet deep to the top and covered with ten feet of graded gravel and then with drenched channels. Both cover materials are highly porous and would allow contaminants to quickly reach the shallow water table. Both of these known vulnerabilities, the city is required to issue a boil water notice and monitor for microbial contaminants during operations of the well. This procedure works well as long as we protect the recharge area from other contaminants that cannot be removed by coordination or boiling water such as synthetic organic chemicals, volatile organic chemicals and metals, some of which can stay in the water for years. After speaking with the Division of Drinking Water, EDW Engineers, State Water Resources Control Board, the placement of a proposed urban campsite close to the well recharge area would be considered a possible contaminating activity, a PCA, resulting in the need for a complete drinking water source assessment and protection report. Depending on the findings of that report, EDW may add additional current conditions to our use of the North Well. The North Well was almost entirely rebuilt in two thousand and seventeen to improve reliability and meet the land's latest sanitary standards. The activity around the infiltration gallery has been minimized and the water is routinely monitored and currently free of all regulated contaminants. We've done our part to make sure the seventy-year-old well is ready to go in an emergency situation. And this is, this is Rob and I, everyone in the same sentiment here. We empathize with the difficulty in finding a suitable location for the temporary shelter of the risk of placing it within the recharge area of the well when there are other options. It's not something we can support without diligence. So these are my concerns I spoke to the other day and I'll just, the North Well lies here in this little brown building. So the six hundred foot, five-foot around pipe is buried from it almost to the highway. So this, this whole area is deemed the recharge area by the Division of Drinking Water.
It's ten feet deep.
Nineteen.
Nineteen feet.
Nineteen.
Correct. Ten foot of other stuff on it. And so it's that, it's that vulnerable that we can't, if it's that, if it's that vulnerable, then I, we better, we better up our security there as is and the way it is, if that's the case. Because I mean, if it's, if you can get contaminated that easily, then wow, I mean, holy cow.
We did add in the budget this year, I believe, it was a forty-nine thousand dollar budget. To fence from the existing fence here because the six foot with the barbed wire on top that secures this facility itself does not extend past the fire training center or up to the hotel. And so the number, I believe it was forty-nine, that could be a little high, was to fence from there here and up to the road and tighten that whole area up. That was something that staff has asked for, for a number of years, and we tried to sweep it in the budget this year. We've looked at it in other, other budget years. We've tried to, to Rob and I and Van have looked at, how would we fence that area off for that? And then like, we stayed, we've been trying to minimize everything we do back there, what we call a bone yard because we used to keep our old metal pipes and such out there. So we've really, about the last ten years since I've been at the helm of either the yard or public works, we have been actively cleaning it up, working on it, maintaining it that way. That's where the shopping carts end up.
A long line of other trash and stuff too.
So this was the concern that I conveyed Tuesday and the response from the drinking water engineers. So I just needed that out and clear on the table.
It's not an absolute far, I understand it, but we would have to have an assessment.
Right.
According to the.
So we would need to out, and as tonight is the first of many discussions, public works will need to have another discussion of our drinking water, should we choose to be in the general vicinity of that pipe. So I don't have footage to share with you, but you know, there's no real hard, fast, yes, black or white code about it. But it is the concern that that entire area is the recharge area.
Well, like I said, that piping's buried completely underground. Your shed that you're talking about is in the very back, correct? The building, because I've seen it, the building's exposed right now because there's no fencing. The homeless come and go at, right now, all the time. Paul and I were out there doing, looking, going through the homeless and talking to the homeless there on Deer Creek. There were two homeless people wandering around the backyard as, as of when we were talking.
Correct. Just recently, I was informed that the, there was an outlet on the backside, two-twenty mains power on the back of the well that someone, not public works, had taken the cover off, dropped a leg to a ground screw, pulled it over to one-ten power and plugged it four power strips. So they were, yes, it happens. Yes, they get on our yard, they get into our toolboxes. Yes, it needs to be fortified. And before this discussion started, we put it into the budget to fortify that area of the yard. So that's, that's what I have on matter. It's just, we just need to be mindful to be not right on top of it or as we're speaking tonight.
Right on top of it means, right on top of means through the dog, the county or the dog training areas, where I'm looking at, you're talking about. That would be right on top of it.
Correct.
Which, that's not the proposed area. Proposed area is off to the side of that, in the trees here, in the tree area.
Okay. So I have yet to see exhibit, but my understanding is in this area of trees?
Yep, that's it. That's the proposed area. It's right in front of, right next to the little YCT, YCTV Channel Four building. And it would go. The proposed area is from this fence over to the other existing fence over there. There's the new back building.
Correct.
It's right over there. It would go right, it goes straight right over there. We mapped out already that out. It's a straight shot. There's nothing there. The, you're talking about piping going right through here, correct?
Yep.
So it's not even in that area that they're going to be.
But it's only half the growth?
What's happening?
It's only half of that growth?
Yes, approximately half of the growth.
Half of it, yes, I'm sorry.
But that would be for extension.
Um. Yeah, that's, that's my understanding right now. Right. So we're, we're going to go into public comments soon and we're going to need people to come up because it's on that, okay? I appreciate that. We want, we want the public's input. We're going to have to have everybody come up to the mic so it's on recording. Everybody can hear it, you know, in the future. So thank you. Yes, that is correct. Okay.
So those are the public works concerns, along with the Department of Drinking Water, who have approved this now. They, they're basically stamped and then on the wrong route to send it off to. So there's, they're in agreement, something is being diligently explored. I do believe it's all about location. They did not dial down that unknown buffer zone, so to speak, from that. Because it is our number one only emergency large force.
Oh, that's a full creek.
I know.
That's right now, yeah.
So that's the parcel. We have, I have papers to pass out if, in case this thing dies on us. I do have hard copies to back up, but if we wanted to go fly around a little bit and look at maybe the rest of this parcel or other parcels that the city owns.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's why we're here, is just to look at other things.
Do you want to look at the, the location proposed for the, the long-term encampment?
Yeah, we might as well bring that up. Is that on, is something we can bring up?
Yeah, yeah, let me bring it up for, just probably fly that one out real fast.
So keep in mind, like I said, this is the temporary location because the long-term location that we're looking at possibly is not going to be able to be ready for a while because we have some ground issues that we have to deal with as far as possible contaminations and stuff on it.
So the parcel that the city owns, which is the final place, correct, that we're looking to go to, is this here, just south of the train station building? There's an empty lot there. Then Steve will probably speak to more of it later on.
It's, I just want to say it's a little bit tricky to see on this map, but to the the mark is the old train station to the south is, at least on this map, are two structures that subsequently have been tied into each other.
Thank you. So it's. And that's, this is the old drying rack, the old, it was a lumber, used for lumber rack for drying lumber.
Arthur, if you'd move your cursor to the left onto that white building, right there.
This would be a lot, some irregularly, some irregularly shaped lot. Blue Goose Shop, because the Blue Goose Shops is over here. The Fairling Road. This with the Beacon of Hope, and then this is the, as I said, is that, that lumber drying building.
Which a lot of the, a lot of the citizens around here know is the old wrecking yard.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. All three of them together made up a wrecking yard.
Yeah.
Hence, having to clean up things.
We have to clean up the area too.
That's their requirement.
So that's one of the proposed spots for permanent one. And like I said, conjunction to that, why we're doing that is because it does border the Beacon of Hope homeless shelters that they're going to be putting in, and then process putting in, I should say. So the hope is there to eventually partnership up with them and hopefully be able to work with them in conjunction to this situation. And that's, that's kind of the long and the short of it on that part. Last, on a lot of these shelters that you, you go to like Medford and, and any of them, they usually do have, it's usually a faith-based organization or some of them aren't, but that usually run the homeless shelters. And it's usually the best fit for that, we found, but.
There's many are nonprofit. Vegas is nonprofit.
Right.
Metra's nonprofit, Axon's nonprofit. Certain point doesn't really have too much of a homeless issue because they're sit right on the, their city limit sits on, right near the Medford camp. So they really don't have that much of an issue because they all go there.
And that is the reason why we have a huge population of homelessness is because we're dealing with all the services. We have social security, we have unemployment, we have behavioral health, we have all these, we have the jail. A lot of people don't realize when somebody gets, they're homeless and in happy camp and they get booked into our jail, they now become homeless in Warricka. So there's a lot of, a lot of little variables that add to the numbers of Warricka's homeless population. And we are the county seat, so that's why we have all these, these different groups and individuals that end up here. So it makes it very challenging to be able to stay on top of it and fix this problem because we're dealing with something that's bigger than us. And because of the, the whole decision made by Boise, the Ninth Circuit Court, it really ties our hands on being able to do things. And people would need to realize too that the, the homeless people, there's, there's a number of homeless individuals in Warricka right now that are families of people who've lived here their whole life. So I know of a half dozen individuals that live here in Warricka that are homeless that actually, their family has lived there, here their whole life and has went down a bad road or something's, you know, caused them to, to go this way. So there's, we got to keep in mind too that these are people, these are actually real people that have real lives and have issues, like a lot of us have issues, but they can't necessarily be able to control those issues. So there's, there's a lot of challenges that go in conjunction to that and we need to keep in mind that these are people too.
Maybe see.
Yes, Debbie.
Maybe see the other parcels that are available on White City.
Yes. Are we ready to see the other parcels?
Yeah, I'm going to probably let, one of the things when you're on Zoom, you have to operate it from up there. Like so many other times when we had the GIS pre-Zoom, pre-COVID, that kind of thing. So, so we'll talk it through. Matt, do you want to go to the, the far north? Okay. Alright, so there's a parcel that Matt will be showing you that the city has owned for quite some time. I'm not sure the original reason the city has it, but it's north of the end of Deer Creek Drive.
Right. So we're on the north end of town again. The city maintenance yard is the long rectangle here, which encompasses the proposed, the first proposed that we just spoke to. It also encompasses Deer Creek Way with the natural area park that was built there a number of years ago, the Greenway Funds. Just north of that is the wastewater plant and, and treatment field, subsurface field. And just to the, the east, to the right of that is the parcel that is available. I can talk about. A number of years ago, there was a group of locals and investors who were attempting to build a golf course in that area. The surrounding parcels are still owned by that entity. But the horizontal rectangle there in the middle of the screen and the triangle next to it, that fronts I five, are both still city-owned. And that's just, staff brought that up as another option. There's, there's more land the city owns. Discuss what, what there is out there. You know, the developer at the time did install a water main. It wasn't ever fired up and it wasn't ever tested, fully tested and run to city spec. But there, there is a water main that runs through it.
So keep it, keep in mind with the Boise decision that if we inconvenience them to where they can't get to their services properly, then we also can be sued. And on top of that, none of the homeless will wander that far out. So if we, if we do decide to do that, then as a city, we would be looking at transportation.
Exactly. So staff has looked at all available city parcels. This is one of them. So we thought we'd throw it on the list that we talked about. That's valid point. It's not, it's out off the very north end. It's off the end of the paved route. It's, it's up there. The other available parcels that are city-owned that don't have anything on them, including infrastructure, is a little horseshoe piece to the south of that across I five, but that, that is a juniper and it's not really conducive there. So.
Is that, that's the one right next to the flop through there?
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, exactly, the Warricka plots. So that's a danger.
This map was created in two thousand and nineteen, so it doesn't include everything. There's a few emissions in it, but this is what we had on the short time to, to grab up and throw up for you tonight. So all city-owned properties on this map are just on this map. And you can probably just fly around and talk about it. So you could probably, Arthur, can you go south for me? So we looked through, there's a couple anomalies there that don't make sense. On the west side of I five, when you get up into the, the parks, that's what those are. There's some, a few pieces downtown, a plaza off of Minor Street show up in there and that. You keep going south, Arthur. And then you see the Big Ten block on the left side of the screen, which is Greenborn Park, upper and lower. And then you see the Big Ten block on the left side of the screen, which is Greenhorn Park, upper and lower. This map does not include the city property, which is outside city limits, which is within the county. But again, what the mayor spoke to is that that's not accessible. It's on the outside city limits. So we would be looking, you know, Greenhorn Park is city-owned property down there. And then Arthur, on the very southeast tip of Greenhorn Park, zoom in, yep. So this one's missing a tooth also. So you see there's a rectangular block that drops south from the park property. And then there's two smaller parcels just to the right of it, just east of that one. There's actually one missing on this map. That should be three small parcels and one larger one. Those are the lots on campus, which are city-owned. And then the three across the, the street are also city-owned properties.
As well as some of the ones to the north.
Correct, correct.
So those, those parcels are immediately by College of the System.
Right. Center of the screen, move your your cursor left, please, Arthur. Just over onto the college. Yep. So that's College of the System Wariqua. Winland Oaks is shown as a street here on kind of the bottom quarter down there on the south side and it runs on now.
That's a county-owned scene.
The one at the corner is a county-owned piece.
We don't, we don't know no corner just south of Behavioral Health right there.
That'd be Winland Oaks, that's AmeriHouses.
Yeah.
Hotel six. So that's the behavioral.
Behavioral Health. We own the three lots to the north of Behavioral Health and the three lots across.
That's county-owned. No, Mark.
Yeah. So for discussion points, those are what we have there.
Keep in mind that one across the street from Behavioral Health, which is next to COS, is the property that we're doing, going to do a fuel reduction on because of the problems of fire hazard that we've had in the past years. We've got two fires on that area. So that's where we're proposing to do a fuel reduction in that area. And that's the reason why we're having this discussion tonight is because with doing that fuel reduction, we, and the amount of homeless camps that are there right now, it should upwards of, at least a dozen up there now. Yeah, at least a dozen, I counted, that we have to have someplace for them to go. So if we kick them out of that place there, next to COS, to do our fuel reduction, to keep Wariqua safe. And that's our first and foremost is we need to keep that Wariqua safe from fires. We have to have someplace for them to go. And that's why, this is why we're back to this stage, we're having this discussion again, is because we need a place for, to have them to go that's safe also for them and is close to services.
Arthur, can you go far left of the screen and click city-owned property? Turn that layer off, just all the way to the left. Yep. Go to the center tab up top.
I wanted to mention parcels that we are not.
Back in on that horseshoe bend on the dirt road. So the, the fire reduction project right there that Mayor Keg just spoke to, if, if you all see the horseshoe bend in the dirt road on, on the left side of the screen right there. We have public works is sent out for quotes over the last few weeks and we received a number of them. We received a low. It's not enough money to go out for a full blown RFP and all of that. So thankfully, it looks like possibly Wednesday, we're trying to nail down a time with the contractor that was chosen to get a dozer up there. And the initial cut is going to be from the center of that horseshoe bend over toward the property line, which is a little hard to see toward the left side of the screen. It's orange. And then all the way down to Alson Road. So Arthur, if you could just scroll out until we can see Alson Road. It's directly south.
It's a long way south.
It's a long way south.
There you go.
Yeah, back in. So it ties in with existing fire break on the Pinberthie property. And that, like I said, try to nail down contractor exact start date. But that's what we're shooting for is Wednesday, get out there and get that cleared. Now there is, you know, there, there could be some timing difficulties that happen with that also. There's still folks out there. Get them out of the way of the, the cut once it's flooded. So I just wanted to speak to that, what you were there. Arthur, I guess you could turn that city-owned property layer back up. So I think that pretty much covers.
Our property at least.
Yes. We'll just explain to him real quick. They may not know what the Pinberthie property is because we refer to it as Pinberthie property. It's the old mill site, but maybe you could tell them what that property is.
Yeah. So the, the large forty plus acre area. Acre property directly south of our property next to the college is, was once the Pinberthie.
And behind Chevron and Burger King.
And all the way down to Alson Road, which is the dirt road, the last, one of the, one of the last six roads.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, just falls.
Yeah. I knew what they just said.
There, there are two other parcels that I'm gonna just, just miss one. One is out, we own about a hundred and twenty acres, more or less, Filletty Road, but that's out a couple of miles. And so that's not one that we have, have considered. There's another parcel of, of the one we were talking about.
Lennox.
Lennox, thank you. It's roughly between the AmeriGas at the top end.
Copy.
On the south end.
Join the meeting.
The freeway and and the creek. So was, was that a council or the judges?
It's John.
But that's it. So that's another parcel. That parcel was, was purchased as part of the long-term flood reduction program. And very visible from the freeway and also adjacent to a over there.
Yeah, lots of residential area there.
Bird Street.
Yes.
Yeah, twelve on the flip side. So if you go up in the Lennox on Main Street side there, it goes across the bridge, then in Dead End's there, it's off to the left, that open field.
Yeah, the cursor's laying in the middle of it. But it's, it's a long, narrow strip along the creek that fronts I five, southbound. So as you come past the first exit.
And the AmeriGas.
Used to go through.
So that's about it for city property, city-owned property.
Right.
To that extent.
We, we do have other city-owned properties in the region, obviously it's parks.
Right.
So we, we haven't gone into those. We do have a parcel that we lease out near the, the Greenway. It was also purchased and donated for the, but we, we leased it out to a business as well. So that's not something that we put on the list. So these are the, the sort of the main ones that we were talking about, locations that pop to the, to the top and.
Arthur, can you zoom in just a little more on that? Bring it up. I know you can't highlight it up tremendously, but.
So because of the semi there, you can see about how long the parcel is.
Yeah.
He's measuring that.
As far as vacant city properties go, that pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
So it's up for discussion at that point.
Yeah. Um, before I open up to public, what does the council have any questions, comments right now? And we'll get the public's view and input on this and then we'll go from there.
I'd like your input because I you never know what they might.
I'll say good. For public input. Keep in mind, I can open up for public input. I do, would like everybody to speak from the podium so it can be recorded, so everybody knows. Less people are listening outside here too. And so we want everybody to be aware of that. And please, if you can, state your name and your address. If you do desire to do so, but it's, it's nice to where we know who you are.
Five minutes, five minutes.
And yes, limit, we're gonna limit to five minutes too, please.
I wonder about capacity. How many people can you put at the Beacon of Hope? Because Beacon of Hope itself only has fourteen people. How many people can you put to campground?
That is a good question. I think we're.
We're, we're working on logistics and I would hate to say, but I would figure, I mean, we were looking at different configurations, but comparing it to say what's going on in Medford or I think in that little area that they have, which is equivalent to ours. It's wider, but it's shorter. Probably have fifty-five campsites in there. Yeah, yeah. But again, we're looking at other, we're not trying not to reinvent the wheel. We're looking at other areas. But that is, that, yes, that's a concern.
Yes.
That's a concern.
And is there showers in the Beacon of Hope?
It's going to be, yeah.
And will the people at the campground?
We, we can't speak to that. Speak for that. Now, as, as of right now, we're, we're hoping that we were going to be able to work in conjunction with the Beacon of Hope on all that.
But we, we can't speak to that.
Details that we have not even discussed yet, but.
We don't know.
But showers are on our, again, we're, we're looking at other places. See Las, Las Vegas is a lot, much larger city and they have all of theirs, somebody donated a motel, a six-story motel or three-story motel. And so they've got, they've got transitional housing in the motel, which is required. They've got the campgrounds in the parking lot and then they have then they have the shelter. They all have it on one, on one, in one area. And so they actually have showers built there. I think that the, what I'm seeing in a lot of the smaller towns is they're, they'll bring in showers. Bring in showers once a week or something like that.
I know that's.
So, so that's, that's an issue that we're dealing with.
Hotels, Wariqua Hotel would be a good candidate for a project.
Right.
Especially because it has a fair part.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't worry. Okay, so, so we're taking on this responsibility of the homeless. So how are we gonna take care of the bathrooms? Because I understand that's worrying about our, our lines. Because these people go to the bathroom in buckets and then they'll just pour them out. I've seen it. I've smelt it. It's horrifying. And if I've got to drink that water, there's gonna be a problem.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna have pour potties there. We're not just gonna let them just go around in the free, free willy.
Oh, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So I'm worried. So and then again, how many people? And also I would really like the city to look at employing a mental health person as being liaison. So these are officers are not tied up with these people who are running around screaming and yelling and kind of crazy when they could actually be doing something serious, especially because they only have two officers at a time. And this liaison can be called and he can run out there and find out what's happening.
So they, that's the police department, we have Martin Gilman here, but he's new on everything, but he knows exactly how that, how that works. And they're actually in contact with behavioral health and human services and all that stuff. So they, they actually are in constant contact with them, trying to hook them up with services, whether that may be with, it may be just hooking them up with rehabs of some, some sort that they can do or just mental illness issues that they may be addressing. So yeah, they are, they're in constant contact with them right now with doing that. We're, we, we work hand in hand together with that. So there's, to, to bring one on as an employee, I mean, that's definitely something we could look into for sure. But I think, I think it's a better partnership if we could see to a tighter relationship with behavioral health.
Well, we would, they would be behavioral health, but they would be, belong to the police department so that, you know, the police department didn't have to call behavioral health and say, oh, I need, no, they would be right there, hands on all the time.
Yep.
And that would be the way to do it.
And there's actually, there's actually a, a person that we've discussed, what we can bring into the police department that's actually not a policeman. It's actually ranked below that. What, what's that called, Mark? It's a, a public officer. Or what is? There's, we can bring somebody in and it's actually not an officer. You can.
A liaison. Remember I talked to you about a homeless liaison. So they can go out, they would know their yes, a social worker who, who knows how to deal with these homeless people.
So I can answer that if I can speak that term. But it's similar to how they have mental health division that goes out and calls. Takes pressure off law enforcement and they raise on with law enforcement. So that's, we talked about, we talked about that. That would be a track. That is.
Okay, cool, thanks.
So Mayor, I want to ask the conversation that's, that's going on now. Sometimes, I, I don't know how many people are, are planning to talk to me, want to, to find out. And if you would like, we can write down some of the questions and then answer them all at once. Is that would be convenient?
Yes, that's fine.
But it's up to you on how you want to handle that. But it may help to know, I see two more people up there, but I don't.
Any, any ideas, any ideas people want to put forward?
Yeah.
Any idea is, is warranted.
Positive, positive ideas.
Right, right. And, and you know, that place out there is honestly, I know it's a city yard and I know it's scary and I worry about the drinking water too. But honestly, it's probably the best place for, for permanent. Because there's people who will not stay at Beacon Hope because they have been preached at and that is associated with that. So automatically it's going to be negative connotation. They won't hold it. But if there's a place alternative where they can go, that's pretty free and pretty, you know, laid back, that's pretty cool, you know? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything correction, Mayor? Don't, don't we have three officers on the time out too?
What, I'm sorry?
She said two officers, don't we have three officers on?
Well, depends on what time of day it is. All right.
Long time.
How you doing, Ted?
Good. I'm just like, I'm gonna commend you. Been up every, you've been doing the last couple of weeks, both down the Greenway Project and also in and around Greenhorn Park. But I don't believe it's enough. I've been going through Greenhorn and also down the Greenway Project for, you know, several months now, taking photographs. I have over two hundred. The problem is, and you have to understand that I understand homelessness is an issue. And also understand that we have to have a place to put the homes and have a feel that they're part of our community. Where the inherent breakdown appears to be is in the area of health and safety standards are not being met anywhere in any of those homeless camps. I looked at a camp notice, I can go through every one of these and see at several homeless areas, that none of those are being followed. None whatsoever. I've seen illegal dumping in the Wariqua Creek watershed, which is a critical habitat for the gold salmon. That cannot be we can't have. We just can't. We've got to keep that clean. No matter how much we have to go through and walk through and issue citations on a daily basis for creating a public nuisance. We can do that. You can do that. Ninth Circuit Court gave that ruling, but at the same time, you can't issue citations for creating public nuisance or illegal dumping or throwing trash in and about and around for illegal fires. One of the things I've had a real problem with. Uh, one of the things I've had a real problem with is when I'm riding my mountain bike through those areas or seeing the amount of dogs that are tied to trees for hours on end. We can't have that either. I understand we need to put them someplace and we have to put it in there. You know, the human waste issue is, is huge. Uh, I'm a professor and instructor at College of the Siscus, at the North Campus. I can't imagine an individual who wants their daughter to enroll in the nursing program and has courses at night. I, as a parent, would never allow that child of mine to enroll at College of the Siscus because of what we have just to the south of College of the Siscus. That's got to be rectified. Uh, and I, I applaud your efforts. But we have to get there and we have to get there quickly. We need further enforcement of the dumping issues, of the human waste issues, of the drug paraphernalia. Twice with my grandchildren at Lower Greenhorn Park, I find needles down by the playground. Come on, we can't have that, even though we know where needles came from, public health. Again, I just want to make sure that, uh, we understand that we need to take care of this problem. But at the same time, we have to work with the homeless to ensure that the illegal dumping, the use of drugs in and around public areas, the dumping of trash into critical coho habitat. And it, the areas in and around our parks, including Len Skander Trail, where there's a homeless dump that's been there for two years and then reported three times, they've got to clean it up. I know resources are scarce, believe me, I understand it's worth it. But at the same time, if we don't assist the homeless and understanding the importance of that, we're going to keep filling these city council meetings with people that aren't happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, one more thing, uh, in future meetings, could we please have available, uh, agendas for the public? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ted. Thank you.
None of you know me. Anyway, Diane Collier. And then Wairega, Shelly. Um, so I just have a couple of questions and some of them were already addressed. Um, so, I mean, I know he was just talking about the property they're on by behavioral health. Did you guys ever? I understand the things he just brought up too. But did you guys think about moving them back to that one? Has that been something you've considered?
Move them back to the same location?
Yeah, after you clear the fire, you know.
Doing more fire reduction there, or fuel reduction, excuse me. Um, because of the, because of the impact, you know, we really, it's not really a suitable place for them to be. Plus, like you, like you stated, um, it would be more suitable to get them away, get individuals away from COS.
Yeah.
Um, because that's, that's one of our livelihoods of Wairega, to be able to, uh, see that expand and grow for sure. I, I would love to see that facility grow and bring in more stuff to Wairega area. So, um, yeah, to, to bring it back to that same area, um,
I agree.
It's one of, it is one of the possibilities. I mean, that was one of our city-owned properties, but to, like I said, we want to, we want to be able to, um, offer sit, you know, people, citizens and outside entities, something valuable. And when they come to look at COS and they see, uh, homeless encampments, it's kind of discouraging.
Oh, so on foothill, the property down by the Beacon Hope. I, I drive by that every day on the way to work. So I, I just don't, yeah, it looks so tiny, the area you guys were looking at. Now, when you say too inconvenient for services, are they going to behavioral health? Are they kind of congregating there because that's where they get behavioral health services? And are they going to complain about, I mean, how far is too far in?
Right. And so that, that is a good point. I, and it's, it's kind of under discretion of some of the individuals on how far that is. Some of those individuals, like you said, they do actually receive services from behavioral health. I spoke with them and they actually do, um, they're, they're, uh, workers, like they're caseworkers and stuff. They said, well, yeah, they're caseworkers when I did the vaccination, we did vaccination here a couple of weeks ago. Um, that's what they stated that, oh, yeah, our caseworker told us about this. So there is individuals that are there for that purpose of being close to behavioral health and being able to get that, you know, facility to be able to use that facility, I should say. So, yeah, um, convenience wise, it's, there's, I'm sure there's a certain part of that. I don't know what that means, be quite honest with you.
They, they also need to be close to like food and things like that. And that's. Yeah, and I know it's, we got such a, it, it sounds dumb, but I mean, you know, they've got to be close to all of that. And then also what we're, what we're having and, and, and I just, just because this is what I've been told by people for behavioral health. Because we have some people at behavioral health that say, hey, just camp over there. The city's going to let you. I'm not saying they're all saying that and I'm not saying there's only one campground that was set there and only two. But you know, you kind of get that thing, well, you know, go across there and then one person congregates and another does.
But I know.
And we have talked about that area as a place. It's just, that's why we're doing these public meetings, to get as much input as we can and that, and that's, and we appreciate it. Have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? That's what we need to hear. That's what we need to hear.
Uh, and I'm just kind of curious going along with this inconvenience thing because the far north property that Matt was talking about with the water main going through and there's a big open, how far out of town is, or it's not out of town.
But it's, it's still in the city limits and it's close to, it's close to, like we said, a grocery store and stuff like that. That's, that's kind of the services that we're looking at and.
So wouldn't that be close enough?
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. Yes, Cory.
Um, just a comment, a couple of things. That's what I stated is that homeless are going to be wanting to go where the services are. So our fast food restaurants where they can get a hamburger fifty-nine cents or whatever they can afford. And they're going to be an area, I live in the city for a while, they're going to be an area of tourists, where tourists are generous, where they can get the handout of a dollar or two or change. And so they want to be out where there's going to be a lot of activity. Our activity is to the south with, um, development with the fast food. Uh, and then I want to make it clear is we cannot make them go anywhere. We can suggest there's a camp, so moving them temporarily to off that hill. We clear it, they can wander right back there. We're back in the same.
Until we have a place.
You know, position. Right, until we have a final. And even when they moved them off the other parcel on Campus Drive, it says PPL substation, there was two who declined to go there. They did, they chose to go to Deer Creek Way in the Parkway, Deer Creek, because they know, where are you going to place me? No, I don't want that location. I want to go here. So they had, they put where they want to go. So I just want to make clear, they, they don't have to do and they can wander right back up there.
Okay.
It's just, we can't make them do anything.
Assuming we have a permanent, we follow this state ridiculous law. So we, we have to do this. We put this permanent place in, let's say we put it at the north end and we say, that's where designated, that's where it's going to be. Set this thing up for them to camp there. And they don't like it because it's not by McDonald's. I kind of don't care, but, um, at the same time, if they wander back to where they were by behavioral health, at that point, do we have like the ability to say, well, too bad? I mean, what, what's our?
So there is, yeah, some gray area in that that we can't address, yeah. Because of us being able to have this area designated does give us some clout to be able to say, yes, we need you to go there. So we set up some, right now, we don't have anything set up. So now we have nothing. We have no, no voice, no nothing. They can wander where, point to point and really don't have anything to say in any of it. And with setting up these designated areas, like I said, we are setting up bathrooms, hand sanitized, safe stations, you know, all these things uh, to make it easier and, and, and some of, some of these individuals will not choose to go there. I get that. That's one of those things. So that's one of the future, um, issues that we'll be addressing all the time. But there's also things that, you know, like what Medford's done, where they did, uh, public safety, more of the, uh, ordinance on public safety, fire danger. So those, those are things that we'll be working on too in the same instance to help mediate these issues and go to another level and be able to say, okay, this is what we have. It's safe and it's safe for those individuals that are experiencing homelessness. They go, okay, this is a safe place for you. There's no drugs, there's no alcohol. They're not going to, that's not going to be allowed. Um, if they want, we can't stop them when they go off that area and go into someplace else, but that's something that we'll be able to have a little control over, yeah.
So a couple of last things, uh, I was fencing was going through my mind. I'm not trying to make a concentration count, but I mean, just kind of, I don't know if you're kicking around some fencing, if that's an option. I know they climb over fences, but so I guess the type of fencing and, uh, maybe that might be, I don't know, you could really do temporary fencing up where the proposed, you know, by the yard right now, this temporary site, um, to help contain where they could wander. Um, I don't know, that might be too much of an expense. I don't know if that's doable. But then the other, the last thing is, if, I mean, I'm kind of more of a proponent for the far north end. I, I think, why not? I mean, it could be, and if it's not too far for walking distance, we're going to get smacked around on that.
Yeah. I don't think, in a sense, it's like I said, close to, it's in the city limits, it's close to grocery stores and stuff like that. Then I don't think there's ever going to be, I don't see where there'd be any issues with that. Um, we start putting them out of the city limits, like some of the other proposed spots that we've talked about, then yes, we will have a problem with that guaranteed.
And with that, it doesn't look like there's any trees or shade, so would you guys be planting?
Exactly. And that's, that's, and that's why this, this, we're talking about, when this proposed area has trees where it actually will be cooled. Yeah, a little black.
Well, there's a couple. So anyway, those were my questions.
All right, thank you.
And far north, you mean far north, you're talking about two cities, you're talking about two cities. Okay, city area.
I forget Paul.
Oh, Paul. Yeah, I'd like to address something. One, one thing I do want to say then, I'm sorry to, is that, uh, we as a council are not, and the city are not speaking for Beacon of Hope. But we are forging a relationship with Beacon of Hope, with the, um, Resource Center, with, um, with, um, the county, the city. In order to be able to, this is not going to be just a, a city, it's not just going to be someone, the city's going to go wave its magic wand and things are going to go away. But we are trying to forge these, um, these relationships. Secondly, in Martin versus Boise, which was filed in two thousand eight, but it didn't get to a jur, to a jurisdictional decision from the, it climbed its way up to the circuit, Ninth Circuit in two thousand eighteen, and then the Supreme Court refused to hear it. So essentially, they said, we're going to, they, they basically, what they do is they uphold it. The thing, when, when the mayor's talking about clout, if we provide a place for them to go, we could say, hey, you know what? You're going to have to get off this property. We have a place where you can go. Where they go is their business. But they have, they will have to vacate because we're providing a spot for them to go.
Yep.
So the other thing that I would, would share, and I, this first time probably Officer Gilman has heard it. But, um, one of the, we're looking at lots of different variables as far as getting people into, into an urban campsite in Medford, in Ashland, you must, you must be recommended by law enforcement. And you must sign a contract and you must hold that contract. And out they have, they, they have only temporary fencing around and the reason, but temporary is not, is not for the people to see, the homeless wanted privacy. And they can come and go between six AM and ten PM. If they want to come in during, uh, any other time of the day, um, or night, they have to be brought in by an ambulance, a policeman or, um, a licensed clinical social worker. So now, is that where we're going? I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is there are, there are rules. It's not just, oh, you come and go wherever you want. We're, we're, and we're trying to work that out. That's why we're trying to do it with other entities. And I'm sorry to take your time, sir.
Hello, I'm Matt Williams. Um, I live at two oh five East St., which is the last property you just looked at. I own exactly across the street and live there um, with my wife and her, um, special needs eighteen-year-old girl. And also being right there in the neighborhood. I know a lot of the kids ride their bikes around, they go out to field and play. And I'm just going for some concept for against this site. There's no shade. There is fire danger. I know you guys mow the field, but from where you stop mowing down to the creek is going to be a huge fire mess. Um, and also the creek itself. And the bridge right there, we've dealt with homeless people there on and off for years and years. They always leave a lot, yeah, under the bridge. They leave garbage. One year, the city came and cleaned it up. They took two dump truck loads of garbage out from that bridge. And I mean, that's a lot of work and I understand they can't just wipe these or we're booked with these and they can't be there all the time. Um, but there's no real access for them to go except for either out through the gas company property or down, down East Atlantic Street, which is right through a, essentially a good urban interface, you know? And also it wouldn't look good on the city to have that right there on the freeway. It's going to deter people from tourist steam here, along with maybe moving here and helping the Wairega grow. And with the bathrooms and stuff, I know there's access right there across from my house. So you'd be able to get the board bodies down there and maybe it will be serviced. There's also, uh, right there along the freeway, there's a high-power junction box right there. And there's always people trying to jump the fence there and they keep knocking that open. And it's been repaired four times in the last five years. And that's really high voltage lines. And also there is a gas line that runs underneath that bridge right there. Which they built wires into there before. I've always called YPD, they came in and put them out. Because it wouldn't take much to get that pipeline done. And with that neighborhood there, I know there's other special needs children in the neighborhood. Um, the one I have, she wouldn't understand what's going on. She would not open that. Sure, the other people in the neighborhood would feel the same way. I know there's some people from the neighborhood here.
I was going to say, um, we did have that up for discussion at our last meeting and that's, I opposed that location. And we did have some neighbors or homeowners on there. I did put, we did put a stop to that location. I opposed it. My fellow council members and then the other two did decide to take that location off the possibility. So it's off for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My parents have a house on Living Street as well, and so I was due to oppose that site due to all the reasons that Matt just said. And so now I don't feel like I need to say anything, but thank you very much for hearing us and I'm glad that it was taken off the um, this, the recommended sites because it's really not a good location for, you know, it just looks ugly for people to see that coming off the freeway. Who would want to come to Wairega, either to do business here or to live here when you saw that? That would be not good. So besides the fire danger and everything, so anyways, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. One more that I got, we have somebody on, uh, on Zoom that wants to talk too, but go ahead, Mark.
Good evening, Mark. And, uh, old private property. But one of my clients, we go down there, go to the outlet, we're having the heck of a time with the homeless. Sitting there, getting drunk in front of the business and moving on the sidewalk. We need to start keeping these people out of there. It's interfering with people's businesses and everything. And it's just, it's just the bad scene. There's, you know, some gal holds up to get her haircut and there's two guys drunk hassling her when she walks through the door. You know, Richard Hamley's hat, so, and I take care of all his properties down there. We need to do something to curtail this activity that they do. Put a picnic table someplace where they can go sit and drink their beer instead of hanging out in front of all the shops. That's all I would say.
And I want to thank you for all your services you've been doing for everybody.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, Mark, the whole council and the city wants to thank you for as much garbage as your group has picked up and as much time as you guys have put in. And ladies, you're wonderful. Well, I, I, we all appreciate you, even though, yeah, we appreciate you, even though it's, I don't see you out doing it. Because you guys just haul away tons of garbage. I bet you've hauled away five hundred to a thousand. Cause you guys just haul away tons of garbage. I bet you've hauled away five hundred to a thousand tons of garbage.
Every day, twenty hours a week.
Thanks, Mark.
Before we go, there's, is there still somebody on Zoom that wants, two people on Zoom? So let's go to that first, please, one of them.
Hi, uh, my name's Lori Brenner, and I live up on the top of Outson Road, and. I have sort of this mixed perspective, I'm glad that this is a topic that you're, you know, addressing. Interestingly, as a grade five state water resource control board certified wastewater operator, I understand. The concerns from Public Works about that site, you know, with the recharge area. However. Compared to a place closer to College of the Siskus or Greenhorn Park, God forbid. I think that that may be the best location from my perspective. I can tell you that I. Boundary Cindy and Wayne Hammer's place and the King Fire burned very, very close to my land, it didn't hit it. But I've had issues um, with, I had a filthy naked man up at my gate. I've had my trail cameras stolen. Uh, I had a deer poached and caught it on camera, that it was one of these sort of scruffy, potentially homeless people. In hiking on my own land, I've been confronted, accosted verbally, they're aggressive. And, and that's an issue, and it's safety is a concern. You know, my property goes down into Greenhorn where basically flum and humbug intersect. And everything above that is mine, and I have people coming up through there wanting to camp. To try to, you know, colonize the top of my land, and I, you know, asked them kindly to move on and try to be. Empathetic but firm, and, you know, there's just a lot of issues. The filth, the biohazard, the, the drug paraphernalia. Um, you know, one person really cussed me out, they're making warming fires on private property. Property in heavily treed areas, you know, I, I came here and I love the place, and I don't want my, my home and my land to burn to the ground because. We allow people to create, oh, it's just a warming fire, I've called several times, you know. When people, when Pemberley before it was cleared, when they were clearly making fires there. Oh, well, it's just a warming fire, so we have to let them do it, I'm like, okay, I can't even run my weed whacker. So I'm confused how someone's allowed to make an open fire, and, and so. I'm looking for solutions, not to sort of just complain, I think. You know, what is the timeline that you have even tentatively for the long term solution? Bowers, will there be trash service regularly, city trash? Cause, you know, I think one of the enforcement issues is that. We have to create a culture where they're responsible and accountable as well. Cause this hoarding and garbage and trash and, and waste in bags is ridiculous. And it's unsafe. And so, you know, my question really is, is hopefully um, what the timeline is, and then. How I as a citizen can contribute, what can I do to help make it move? That's, that's all I would like to find out.
Thank you so much for your input, that's, it's, there's a lot of things that incorporate that, like I said, there's private uh. Property that's getting majorly impacted uh, because of this issue that we need to address, and that's why we're. Talking about this tonight, and we're trying to come up with the most suitable location. Because the citizens shouldn't have to pay for issues that the city needs to deal with, so this is why we're, we're discussing this.
As a private landowner, you can have them removed from your land.
Oh, no.
We cannot, fresh as, as public, but you can. And the other thing is the Boise decision does say, not now, and what Lori pointed out was, is very apropos. On public land, we have to provide a place like in the winter for them to have a little warming. And that's something, again, that we're working on in our campground, a dug in whole thing, but I mean, there are certain things that we are bound by. Whether we like it or not, but the private citizens, you do have a little more staying in.
Oh, absolutely.
So, but I know the.
You know, that's, that's the whole thing we're getting down to, this is falling on the citizens, and it's, it's, we shouldn't be letting that happen. We should, we have responsibilities as a city to help that out. Is there another one?
Yes, hello, I am Tara Ames, um, I have a, a master's degree in social work, and um. I moved up here from Butte County a couple of years ago, and in Butte County, I helped to start a uh, low barrier homeless shelter. I have more than eight years of working with this population, and I just kind of want to share with everybody that this process is, you know, we're on. We're on a, out of the whole alphabet of things that have to happen. Um, and this is a really, really challenging subject, and it, you know, it. Light a lot of fires under people, you know, my, my concern is that. When the city is talking about moving people to this other location, because that's the requirement for the city. The unintended consequence of that is that people are. Most likely, you know, and I've seen this before, they're most likely not going to be going to the new location, they're gonna relocate. The question then is, how do we prevent fires when they're all scattered? Right now, this encampment is all pretty much in the same location, um. It's highly visible, when they move, they may be going to other, you know, more forested areas, more bushes, more undergrowth, and. That's a real concern, so when we're talking about a location where people should go, you know, people have brought this up already, is that. There should be bathrooms, there should be um, sanitary stations, um, there should be something that is incentive for them to go. Unfortunately, the population that we have in this encampment is not our sober. Or it should at least say the most sober community that we have in the encampment. And if there are the high restrictions of them going to this location, there's not an incentive for that to happen, the scattering is going to happen. That's just what I wanted to share.
Can you repeat your first name, please?
Sorry.
What is it?
Tara.
Tara, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your input, and thank you for everything you do too.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the, before we, ones in the audience here?
I'm also a volunteer with Beacon of Hope, so I've been involved with trying to come up with solutions. Unfortunately, we're ways off before we open a shelf or so. But we do hope to uh. Do hope there's some type of wear shelf program, we don't know how that, what form that's gonna be.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Steve, you're a nonprofit?
Yes.
And I know, I know that you're, you've been involved with them for a long, long time, how much, all your money I know is donated. How much more money do you think you need realistically? Cause you've got to finish the whole lot, I know, to get your, are you looking at hundred, hundred fifty, hundred seventy five thousand?
A hundred thousand.
Okay.
Even more.
Okay, because you're gonna have a commercial kitchen, which is required by the state.
Yes.
And other things, okay, and so, I, I, I'm pandering, I know. Donations, if anybody, if anybody supports us and wants to donate, plus the P O box. Do you know? I shouldn't, okay, okay, I'm sorry, but I know that, I know that you guys have been working like crazy. And, and so I just want people to know if they want to give ten dollars, five dollars, twenty dollars, anything helps.
But we do have a website, and we do our Facebook Beacon of Hope. So I have two questions. The well, we were talking about the north end, how often is that been used, say, in the last ten years?
Matt will have to address that one.
So thankfully, the North Well is an emergency well, and the money that we, we rebuilt the wellhead. So to speak, the building with bumps and all that in it, uh, probably five or six years ago. But the importance of the well is not. To me, and the protection of the water system for our community. It's not how much we use it, it's that we have it, because we have one water source, which is Fall Creek. And when that, when Fall Creek goes down, somebody rips through with an excavator out by a care, you know, middle of T R C D. There's the option of us still providing water, even though we have to boil water, notice it, we have to ration, it gets us through the hard times. So, I'm, I'm paid to work for this organization to secure the water and the wastewater, and that's just my passion. So, I'm not, I'm not letting that override the fact that we need somewhere for them to go. It's just that I had a sinking feeling that the state water board would have something to say about it, and they did. It's not a hard definitive note, uh, Mr. Baker. Brought that up, it's not a, you can't do it, it's how far away from that can you? So I, I, I need to answer that question, if I have, so.
We will have, you know, sanitary facilities for the encampment, so it's not likely to be walking out. Anyway, that's just one question, the second one is, I ride mountain bike in Greenhorn quite a bit of the time. And it seems to me, to the west end of Upper Greenhorn, there's quite a bit of space out there where there's. Piles of concrete and different debris that's been placed there, but there's also a fair amount of ordinary, is there any reason we couldn't. Establish a camp on the west side of Greenhorn?
That's something too, I don't know, why did we, why didn't we bring that one up tonight?
City limit stops just past the entrance to Upper Greenhorn. And it has a lot of weird little jobs that run through there, it's for private properties. So, the majority of what we're speaking to is in the county, but it's owned by the city. So it's not in city limits, so we didn't add it to the list, but we didn't feel it was accessible enough to me.
Right.
I guess. We should have looked into it further, I, I just didn't add it to the list.
And I think the key thing there is, like, like you just stated, was accessibility too, because um, it's, like I said, it's, it's. Out a little bit, but it's, is it too far out, I mean, doesn't necessarily have to be a property that um, is in the city limits, that's not necessary. That's, it's just, it has to be the accessibility part of it's the key, key part of that.
I recommend it, I just say.
Right, you are, yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, that's good.
No, thank you, Steve. P O box five five seven, Beacon of Hope. Nine six zero nine seven, and, and I, I know I'm pandering, I realize that. But, you know, it would help. And I know that they have grants, but all big grants want to wait to be the last person to put the money in. So they want to give the last forty grand, so they won't give it to them now, they'll wait till they're almost done and give them their money, so. Thank you.
No, thank you.
First is, well, simple, what the speed limit is right there, it's a bunch of that, I'm hoping, switch to higher speed limit, or still the in town speed limit. And then the second question would be, I haven't heard any discussion about proximity to the high school, and if you guys have discussed that. In the, we heard a little bit about um, grocery outlet, and also the high school being there in that position, it's an open campus, so I know as a high school. Parent, high school parent, there are, it's a lot of walking around throughout the day in that area as well.
Yes, no, thank you. Now, it's something we definitely did consideration too.
Well, and you could see, when we were looking at it, you could see the, see the football field, which I know is on the high school, but I thought about that when. You know, when we were looking at the pictures of the, from the.
Right.
I believe it's still twenty five, right, until you get a little bit further?
Uh, Mark, you might can address that, sorry, Mr. uh, Chief Gilman. Right, oh, we're, she was just asking the speed limit there, do you know what the speed limit is on that, right there? Okay, I just, sorry, I just, sorry, I put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'm not trying to discourage that, so I think that the Shatties is actually a pretty decent spot, out of the ones we've heard as far as.
Thank you. Why just students and speakers?
Is it too late to call backseats on that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an air conditioner for a building that may or may not get used?
We haven't.
Because that two hundred thousand dollars can help fix the Beacon of Hope, where we actually need something instead of maybe some down. Time down the road. I just think giving away two hundred and thirty thousand dollars was ridiculous, when that should have been after this.
But we don't want Beacon of Hope. Can I, can I just address it a little bit? Um, the city has been working with Beacon of Hope, and Steve, did you leave?
No.
I know Steve and Don Langford and uh, they're bored, cause I go to their meetings as regularly as I can. One of the things that the city is trying to do is to pick up grants in order to fund things like this. But there are very specific ways we could spend certain monies, and, and actually, you know, even, even our general fund monies. There are specific ways we can do it, and we can't just take and give money to Beacon of Hope, but if we can. Apply for a grant that allows us to work with a nonprofit that is not using. Paying their labor prevailing wage, cause there's, there's a whole lot of stuff that goes with it, then we can, you know, help them, and that's what we've been. That's what we are trying to do, and, and Beacon of Hope, I think you guys are pretty aware of it, cause I mean, we talk. When we're working, we talk almost every day, you know, we're, we're together, so we are looking at that, the, the two hundred thirty thousand is a total, it's kind of a whole separate pot. And it isn't something that we could do, if, if we did that, what would happen would be then, other taxpayers would say, no, 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 you're funding. A faith-based organization, and I understand, whether I agree with it or not, doesn't matter. But it is, it, I, I do want to let you know that it is something, Don Marie, that we. Are, we are trying to pick up money here and there so that we can help Beacon of Hope.
Right, and I just realized that when, when John was here, and he was um. Pandering to the city council about getting help. And I made it real clear that we needed to help, so we did give them our, our, a lower grant, a, a lower.
Fifty percent on the older piece.
Yes, um, because I was up here yelling and screaming, and they did that. But why just fifty percent? We need this done. We should have given it to all, given the whole thing, we have a homeless problem. And we did not have a homeless problem as big then, but now it's, oh my god, and people are not just in this one area. On this place you're moving now. There's how many camps?
Oh, we got numerous, I, we, Paul and I went out a couple of weeks ago, like I said, and.
Between us, we hit probably ninety five percent of camps, between you and I.
Yeah, we hit most of the camps, and they're, yeah, they're, they're all over town.
Most, how many?
Oh, good. Um, probably, I don't know, a dozen there, we're looking at upwards of probably at least forty different encampments.
Exactly, so this one place, Beacon of Hope, and this other place where you're gonna put it, is not gonna be enough. So, Fort Hill, I mean, not Fort Hill, but out there at the county yard, that's looking pretty good. We need to secure it so that they can't touch any of the county, but that has to be used, there's not a choice. And people aren't gonna want to be underfoot. They're just not.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna venture to say that fifty percent of the people that you say we have this are gonna say, I don't want it.
Yeah.
And we, and we don't have any control over that.
And honestly though, but out at the county yard, honestly, you know.
But, but I can tell you, you're talking about John, you were talking about the, the minister that was heading up, yeah. I, I do want to tell you, cause I was not involved with council at that point in time. I happened to be involved with John one time, uh, when he came in to speak to staff. Um, and, and I'm not telling Steve anything, or anybody on Beacon of Hope, they don't know already the board, and I was, I, I told the man, if you treated. If you treat other people like you're treating the staff, and I wasn't, I was just coming to be, I said, you, you're, you need to get out. We have a much better working relationship, I think, now than we had back then, and Beacon of Hope knows that we are working with them. And we are doing everything we can to, to. To make sure that things move slower, I mean, we don't have control over P P and L. We don't have control over six or ten or twelve thousand dollars that they're gonna have to pay to get their power put in. We don't, you know, but we are trying, we are working with them, and it's a long-term project.
Yeah.
So, I can assure you of that. And I can assure you, whether, whether or not I was on council, Steve Renner. Who's about as different from me as anybody, we're, we're like, you know, just totally opposites, he's the one that got me involved in this. He's the one that said, hey, you need, you need to come and, you need to see what we're doing, and, and, and after I did then, you know, and everything we're doing is. Uh, everything they're doing, cause your brother works like crazy out there, uh, everything they're doing is donated.
Yeah.
So, and we, we are working with that, but, but. So, and we, we are working with that, but, but again, tonight what we're looking at is just a short term to try and get us through to get the fires. You know, to get that done, and, and then in the same time, what will continue in the next, in the future meetings is we'll be talking about. Where we're going with long-term, you know, what we're gonna start with and that kind of thing. Looking, having looked at the camps in Bedford, I think that our camp is sufficient, but again, we don't, I don't know.
It's sufficient for forty camps?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't think you're gonna get forty there, yeah, we, we, we even, we even have plans for a small dog run, so the dogs poop in the back and do that kind of stuff, and. You know, we're.
Showers and bathrooms.
Yes, we're looking at bathrooms, yeah, we're, we're not looking at, we're not looking at showers.
That's a small.
We're not looking at showers for lunch.
What's that, I'm sorry.
That is a small property.
Not that small chunk is.
It is.
But there's, it actually goes back a little further, but yeah.
It's an acre, isn't it?
No.
No, it's, it's not an acre, it goes clear back to the railroad ties.
It looks, it looks, it's actually a little bit wider, a little bit bigger than, than it shows, because the way that they have it blocked off right now, the railroad has actually part of that. Blocked off and it's not their property, it's actually just city's property.
Okay, okay, I see, but still, you know.
It is small, yeah.
How many, do we know how many people, physical people?
So that's what we're actually, what we're working on, just so you know.
With the point in time.
We're gonna be doing a point in time count here in another month, and so we'll, we'll be able to gather those numbers, so that's one of the things I've been working on. And, and Paul too, we've been just team, but we're working on that, and we're actually gonna take it to a bigger level, so it's something that's gonna go on throughout the whole North State. That we're gonna start doing a point in time count during the summertime to actually get accurate, accurate numbers of transients that come through our area and stuff. Because that's a bigger, a lot bigger number during the summertime, which everybody knows in here locally, that it's a bigger, a bigger complex issue during the summertime. Than it is during the wintertime, especially places like Naushasta, weed that have, you know, snow loads.
More immobilized, yeah.
That's something we're working on, you know, is to be able to, to bring this, address this as far as the whole North State. Because it's a huge issue, you know, we'll count that, but that's where it's gonna roll into our encampment, our, our urban campsite, is to know that, so we're gonna be doing that here in about another month, so. Thank you.
Can I, can I pander one more time, we're talking about Beacon of Hope, it's not just, I mean, we, we've got a good group of people to pound nails and, and, and that kind of stuff. Uh, we've got diehard people, but the other thing is, um, you'd be surprised, we've had people unblocking. Uh, branches, cutting down branch, uh, cutting branches down, uh, we've had people weed whacking, there's all kinds of work outside also there's. So I, I just, if, if you think you don't have skills, you have, you know, anything. Um, Tom and Craig and Steve will find your, your skill set, they found mine, uh, they'll find yours.
Thank you, Paul, let's hope. Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My name is Sharon.
Sure.
Those people. And I don't. Sound. When I say those. Everything's for them, the rest of this city is falling apart. Who's paying for that, I know my taxes have gone up. I'm a senior. Warrick is full of seniors. How much can we afford to put out?
Exactly, this is with the homeless issue, this is one of those unfunded burdens that the state and the federal level has put on us. And it's, it's, it's ridiculous, it really is, because it should be one of those issues that they should be helping us out on. Instead of putting it on us and load on us, that's even goes with the law enforcement, you know, they have a, a huge problem, you know. With law enforcement being able to fund a lot of the things that they need too, they need, they, we need more officers, we need more stuff, and this. The state and the federal level keeps giving us these burdens that are unfunded, and it's.
So you're gonna have these camps or set up a camp, that's gonna need, need more law enforcement.
I know, that's.
Where is this money coming from, it's gonna be from the taxpayer.
Indirectly, yes. That's, that's one of those things, that's why we're bringing this out, because the public needs to know, that's why we're talking about this, because it is the public, this is the citizens of Warrick that need to know. What's going on and the money's gonna be spent somehow, some way that the state and federal levels put on us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll do a couple more and then we'll go back to council discussion.
All right, uh, I don't know why you're trying to go one or the other, obviously both sides. Beacon of Hope would be great for people who are clean and sober, and you can give Beacon of Hope to a minister, because somebody has to be on site for the minister.
Right.
And then uh, everybody else can go up to the city yard.
Well, part of it, you know, and I, I agree, it might be, might be looking at two different locations like that, I totally agree with you. The main, the main thing is with like, we're trying to work with like Beacon of Hope and stuff and the shelter, is it's easier to connect them with services. When we have somebody there on board, so that's something, if we have two locations, we're gonna have to address that too. Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you.
I do have one more question.
Okay.
You know, people say, you know, you need more policing, you need more, and we do need more policing, but what they don't understand is. They arrest them and they let them go to do exactly the same thing, so they cite them and who's gonna pay? These, these homeless people, they're not gonna pay, you can cite them eighty-five times a day and big deal, that's a piece of paper they're gonna burn. But who? You know?
No, you're exactly right, and that's, I feel sorry for our law enforcement, they, they're getting beat to death because they're doing their job and they're doing a darn good job. And they feel beat down because they arrest these guys and they, they are out faster than they get the paperwork done.
Right, and like I told you before, it just really pisses me off that I have to register and license my dog.
Yeah.
And they don't, they don't have to vaccinate, they don't, you know, they're spreading, you know, diseases all over the place with their dogs. How fair is?
Yeah, and our governor has told us we have no crime, that's why he's closed, one of the prisons at Susanville and he's closed for others, we just don't have it in California.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
Yeah, the state gave money for homeless people, that's why you did the homeless camp.
Right.
So where is those dollars?
Those, most of those dollars went to behavioral health, they did, they received quite a few dollars of. Some of those up to a hundred thousand dollars, a couple of hundred thousand dollars actually, and they received it, and it actually did, it, it, they had another case worker, a few more case workers to the. To the building and they did more programs and stuff like that, so it did help them out to be able to connect these people with services, so.
But it didn't have the saves at all.
Well, it did indirectly, yeah, because like I said, it's, it's giving them services and connecting them with services. We have a friend that works in behavioral health and they're, they're working themselves crazy, there is so much work for them to do right now, that they could have twice the size of staff. And, and still keep, you know, busy full-time, so.
Right.
It's, it's a lack of funding there too, it really is.
And as far as the fast food goes, um, Fort Hill is nowhere near McDonald's. You know, and neither is the green wave, you know, and, and, you know, Greenport, so I don't think that. Putting them out at the eat-on yard, we need to worry about McDonald's, if they're gonna wanna get there, they're gonna wanna.
They're gonna get there.
You know, when they want their needles, they sure get down there to the county. Behave, you know, so.
I, I think the saddest thing for me to see is having Todd at Jackson Street School for, was there twenty-one years and two at Gold. And I can, I'm not gonna name any names, but I, there are kids that I had in school. That I stop and talk to, and, and one of them is actually my neighbor, he's. You know, he, he was four doors down, he refuses, they all refuse to take their meds, he's four. They, they decide, I don't wanna take my meds, I don't like the way I'm on it, they'll use behavioral health services to the point that they feel comfortable. But then again, they are adults, so as soon as they decide that they don't wanna use it, they pull back. And the sad thing is that for whatever reason, they're homeless, each of them has a different story. Each of them was not raised, they were raised in a. Normal. Two-person family except one, but was raised by grandma and dad, but they're making these choices, and unfortunately. We, all of us are having to live with these choices that they're making. And, and it does make it difficult, I think, for behavioral health, for no matter where we choose, no matter where we find and put them, it's, it's. Some of them don't, I don't wanna be helped.
Yeah.
That's what's sad.
Yep. All righty, is there, before we jump up there, unless you have something to comment in, with regards to that?
I just wanted to jump back to the parcel discussion.
Okay, unless, was, is there any other more public comments at this point in time? Okay, go ahead, Matt, sorry.
So when we, I just wanna clarify one point, the city yard is sixty-eight point eight acres. It's not just the, the yard proper, it involves the waste water plant and that, it also includes Deer Creek Way. It's not gonna be a popular opinion, a lot of folks I work with, you know, I think it should be discussed as a parcel, because the city yard is actually has two sites. The post-parcel and then across the creek at Deer Creek Way, there are picnic benches, there's shade, there's flush toilets and running water. And the infrastructure is built, it's in place, it's not what we built it for, but if this is truly a temporary remedy, until the city can get. To our final resting place for that project. I just need it to be out on the table that. I believe that could be discussed. Further, and it could also be out of the area of concern of the recharge area of the water.
So.
Downstream, and it's still, it's still very close to the yard, we still could have a security concern, maybe night watchmen, maybe something along that line. Um, but the, the infrastructure.
Is already.
Eyes, my employees were infrastructure. It's there.
So my biggest, so we've, I've already looked at this, I've watched it. Probably more times than you ever can imagine. Checked it out, because I've went and talked to the homeless people there, the biggest concerns are gonna get into the creek area from there, who you're talking about, so they're gonna be in the creek, we're gonna be battling that. Uh, the other battle we're gonna have too is keeping any type of law and order there, because we can't patrol that. There's no way of going down there, the proposed area that I, uh, the city yard, if we fence that off. They can, it's, the Y P D can patrol a circle all the way around, it was way that, that the driveway has structured. You can drive all the way around inside there, patrol that on a consistent basis, over there, we were talking about, because like I said, I, we looked, Paul and I looked at this, I've walked it, I've, I go out. Ask my wife, I go out every weekend counting the homeless, looking, seeing where they're at this weekend. Go down and see where they're on the side of the creek or outside the creek or whatever, and there, that, that structure, that area is just so hard to patrol. That they're, you're gonna have issues with them doing illegal activity, which you are getting anyplace, I get that, but you're gonna be able to patrol it. In a more structured environment, like the city yard.
Yeah, I always wanted to throw it out there for discussion, my grave concern about that site is fine.
Thank you, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
There, I, I was trying to write down questions, thinking that we might uh, ask them at the, at the end, which you really did, you tried to answer them as, in, in real time for the most part. But uh, I just wanted to mention that there was brought up, uh, health and safety issues, illegal dumping by the creeks, it might impact salmon.
Yeah.
Uh, dogs tied to trees, and I don't know if, I think we know that those are code for, you know, violations.
Right.
But did you wanna make any comments, chief, or it's pretty much, we know about those and we're dealing with them.
Hey, Mark, do you wanna? Come down here, I'm sorry, I'm putting it on the spot, but some, I, I don't know if all the citizens know that you're our new chief of police right now.
Before he speaks, you wanna close a couple of questions, you didn't close it.
Well, not yet.
Well, so just to answer what Steve was saying, these are, these are laws, we can enforce them because they could be, you know. Penal codes or fire codes, fire. The problem we have is to, if you have a law, you have to enforce a law, and you also have mandatory decisions that tells how we enforce law and tell us what our roles are. So the problems that we're dealing with, some of these we can't always just enforce, because then it's seen as crap. So just because there's a law in the book and people call me and say, you know, there's a law in the books, go write a ticket, doesn't mean I can't actually go write someone a ticket for that law. Actually, I'll have to follow the legal steps for that, and the legal steps say, you're homeless, you have nowhere to go. You know, it's raining outside, you build fire, then you're not exempt from that. So it's a very difficult thing, that's why I do what I do, that's why we do what we do, you know, everyone has a job, everyone knows they have a role to their job, or you just have a. Someone, some customer sometimes complains about your job, they tell you, why didn't you just, you know, paint the side of my house today? You can't do it, you know, it feels like, you know, it's flooded, it'll dig me ten holes in a soft flood, well, I've got one shot. You know, you all have the same problems, I have the same problem, so you just have to trust that we know what we're doing. And we're doing everything we can, that's why we have this meeting tonight, we're here trying to find a place to put them, because that's what's important. I think we're, we're taking a lot of side steps around it, and everyone's looking away in the future or going back. But the issue right now is, do we have somewhere to put them, if so, can we agree to that? I'll work on the legal issues, it's gonna be a matter of, I mean, no matter where they, it, it's gonna be an issue. So that, I hope answers my question you're asking, I'll take care of that, let's just decide where we're.
Thank, thank you, Mark, or Chief Gilman. And, and thank you for your service and stepping in as, as chief too, I wanna, I know I, I see this all the time, but. When we have a new crowd, I also wanna say it again, because you're, you're doing the community a great service and stepping in there and. And taking on this responsibility, and it's a huge responsibility, just like you're stating, there's so many things that. You know, to have your hands tied, you can only do this and this and this, and there's a lot of roadblocks and, but you're, you're pushing through and. You're working with your team and you have a great team down there, that's awesome.
Any other questions or any toward, towards all persons?
Well, I don't think so. Okay. I, I, yeah, I think that the other, we talked a lot about why people are at, I believe, your house. And the services and also the other locations, but I think you answered those questions. I think that the Boise decision, a lot of those questions were answered, there was a question about fencing. And generally speaking, staff believes that at least some fencing at whatever location would be appropriate to contain the encampment. And also protect the encampment from, from others. Uh, there was some discussion about trees are a good thing for the camps and concerns about the sites that didn't have trees. Uh, there was concerns about Lennox and there were a whole variety of those, there were some questions about the timeline for the permanent location. We didn't really answer that, but just briefly, there's a, some soil work that needs to be done, and then. So there will have to be soil removed, well, first it has to be tested so we know how much to remove, and some of that's already done, we still need to do more. And then some of it will be moved and then replaced with soil, uh, to make sure that it's on a clean location. Uh, and at the permanent location, there would be a lot of services, trash free services were, uh, were the question, but, uh, we've also mentioned that there'd be a lot of other things. Uh, in there as well, um, how many people can be served by the urban campsite is something that we'll have to get. Uh, more information as we go along, I would suggest, we probably won't know that number anytime soon until we actually get everything.
About another month before we do a fake count.
And then someone asked for the Beacon of Hope, uh, the developer impact fees, uh, reminding the council that at the time that that fee waiver was given, our development impact fees were half of what they. Well, what they should have been, so we were half off already, and then, uh, the, the recommendation was to. Uh, or the, the request was to waive all of the development impact fees and half of those, so essentially. If you look at it one way, they got half off, or if you look at it the other way, they got seventy-five percent off. So, anyway, I think that those are the questions that, and most of them were already answered, and a lot of other questions were, came up and were answered in, in real time, so I just wanted to. So to close that loop, and allow you to go on to council discussion.
Arthur, is there any other public comments on Zoom or anything? Okay, is there any other public comments at this point in time?
I just wanna. Uh, piggyback on what Chief Gilman said, the temporary site, I just, I need support, move on there in the yard.
Thank you. All right, then I'll close the public portion of this.
Hang on, oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, it's my first city county meeting here in Warrick, I'm very familiar with them in the town, how do we serve, or, and you own a home here in town. Uh, we've owned that home for over fifty years. My father was a police officer in this town, I'd like you to also know, and congratulations. I've had some problems here since I've been back in the neighborhood with vandalism. There's some kids on the corner that have problems in the neighborhood for another neighbor, they targeted my house on accident. The first time I've ever called the police in my life. The first time I've ever called the police in my life was in this town because of these kids. I hope that there's nothing they can do about it. They can refer it to probation. I tried to deal with it in a different way and, uh, oh, you kids, I'd like this to get in there. This is the police there. Shut the road down and have a skateboard exhibition. Plant a tree in the park, anything. I'm, I'm concerned that there's no homeless people here. And you're at, you, you're all presuming a lot of what they need or what they would do or what they would want. I don't know if there was any outreach uh, for them to be at this meeting or any of them.
Right, there wasn't.
I am concerned also with the trees being taken down on Main Street. You have these people traveling on foot. They're planning on taking more trees and are not adding anymore. You need safe, walkable neighborhoods that have a temperature. You know, you, you have, they have to go from here to there. So can they safely get there in that amount of time? You know, without having extreme problems. There are, you know, there are a lot of towns that have already done this, but it shows with their COVID, many buy public housing, partners with Southland Mental Health, set up a an area on city property fence, a shower truck, brought it in, that is now shut down. It is not open for homeless, but in the future it is supposed to be.
Why did they shut it down? Pardon me.
Uh, no, because they didn't have enough people to staff it. So that was the main problem. Is, uh, they were training volunteers to staff and also, uh, they did hire one person to be in charge. I know why I was in his, I was in. Thank you. And, um, they just didn't have the people. They do have homeless. So. But, but when maybe said, you know, you're on that other page. And it, and it's not just the homeless. I, I clean, uh, the park at Golden North Street and I have worked two years and we have a lady that comes by and drops her pants in both of the bathrooms there, you know? I, I clean up human feces all the time and she's not homeless. So. I think that partnering more with behavioral health is a good thing, although they haven't called me back since July. For a crisis situation, but you guys are on a good start. You're passionate. You'll get there and you're awesome. You're smart. Over there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know, but the law rules the order here.
Any other public comments? What was that? Public comments that have to do with this and?
May I make a suggestion? We're, we're looking at, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're, these are long-term meetings. We're doing two a month and we'll probably be doing them into next January.
Yes.
And so we need to, we need to break things up a little bit. I know that we were looking at an eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Ending time. It's now eight thirty. I know everybody has lives in that kind of thing. And I, and, and our, our number one, I guess what I saw is our number one decision tonight was what we're going to choose as a, as a parcel for a temporary housing unit. And then we move from there. So I, I mean, I'd like to go ahead and if we can and move forward with that and do whatever we're going to do so that we make, if we make a decision tonight, we do it when everybody's here. And then, and then, you know.
Yeah.
I need a little more specifics on the Deer Creek area he's talking about. Are you talking about Matt?
Yes.
Can't get that right. Uh, Matt, is that where the greenway, the restroom is and the path down below? Are you talking down below the big tree, blah, blah, blah?
Yes.
Okay.
Arthur, can you bring that parcel up for us again, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the parking lot?
Correct.
And these are the bathrooms? Ben?
So like I said, they would, if they're camping out, they're going to be down by the creek. You can possibly just plan on that. That's the only place for them. There's, there's picnic benches, so they could be in some of the flat areas and stuff. But like I said, my, my big concern on that is it's, is being able to patrol it adequately. Because there's no way, once they get down in the tree areas, then it's, there's no way to patrol that. And they, this is one of the issues that we keep fighting right now, is they're in places that aren't seen. And with them being in places not seen and they're doing a lot of illegal activity and, well, we, we've seen it. We've seen, I don't know how many murders in Juarez, uh, homeless people getting murdered. So this is a safety issue on, on that also, on that aspect. So I don't know. I don't know about rest of council bills, but this is, I don't know if that's a an option or not. But this is one of those things that we discussed earlier that we do need to move forward on something. We obviously need to discuss some of the legal aspects of moving forward, but, um, I think at this point, you know, I don't know if there is any suggestions other than what we've suggested.
Um, dear, I know, uh, Paul would like.
Yes, Tim.
I know Paul would like to make a decision right now and I, I get that, but until we consider the other documents that we received late today and speak with the, uh, city attorney regarding the parameters he wants us to stay within for making our decision. Um, I, I don't know how we can make it right, we said.
Well, we can, we can propose, um, a location with the would be, uh, moving forward aspect of legal advice. That's, yes, Paul?
Well, I was going to say, Madam Mayor, pro temp, not making a decision would be okay with me if we need more feds. So I, I am agreement with you. That would be a decision that tonight, we're not going to make a decision. I just think we need to, we need to figure out what we're going to do. And then if we made a decision, it would be at the seventeenth, the June seventeenth meeting.
Right.
I personally am comfortable with either of those last two parcels mentioned, but based on what these.
Well, legal says.
Yeah. And I'm good with either of those.
And, and, and I would agree with you.
So I guess at this point then, and we will, uh, continue this discussion on the seventeenth and June seventeenth. We, in process, we'll go to legal and have some discussion with the city attorney on legal aspects on the, probably the, the last two areas. The last two areas would be the only, those areas that would work, that's feasible. It's best.
Correct. Are you comfortable narrowing down to two areas? Like that, or what were your thoughts on that?
Down Creek Way and two sixty-three. I haven't really been listening. I'm fine. I wasn't silent, I talked. Yeah, I'm fine with those two locations. Okay. And you're. As long as we're talking about, no, I mean, we talked about Deer Creek Way and Highway two sixty-three at the yard. Right. Yes, I'm fine with those two. Last two, okay, I, I agree. So we're all in agreeance.
We need more information, seeing as what you're saying.
Yes, please.
Legal and also, you know, I mean, Matt or may have, he may have loved something or Steve or Ben, they go, hey, you know, we've, we've looked at this, we've found this. I mean, I don't think there's going to be a miracle. It would be nice, but, oh, we just found this beautiful place and it has orchards and, you know, and we can put them there and there's water and but I mean.
And because it's a chance, because it's a. I'm doing, I'm doing, I'm Debbie now. Shame on you, rubbing off on me. And it also gives us a chance to work, uh, together with, uh, the staff at the city yard to explain where we want to put the fence, where it has to be blocked off, kind of the idea, so they're not left out and make them fill. Like, we need to be involved with them as well. So, and, and really draw the plan of that property. That's the one that's selected. Well, we like, so we, yeah. And we also need to keep in mind the Deer Creek spots. It is, there's. And I have to go look at that spot. There's senior housing that's right there too. We need to keep in mind. So.
Yeah. Well, there's senior and then what's the one that LaBaron, O.G. LaBaron built? Is that the is that the trailer park or was that the senior? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have never seen the, like, stuff in that area.
Do you?
Yeah. And I will say one thing, but that Deer Creek Park area is.
Really? Not?
Well, the bathrooms, for one thing, I've never, haven't been open all winter.
But no, you don't see people down there when you go.
Sorry?
All right, then, unless there's any other comments, then we will.
When does the camp have to be moved?
What's that?
When does that camp have to be moved so it can be cleared off?
We need to do it. Uh, when was the?
So, uh, there's probably, uh, more than one step in that process. The first step in that process is that we want to send a bulldozer through and create that fire line that we were talking about, front lane, the end of the switchback. And I, I honestly, we probably need to check with staff to make sure that there's nothing in the way of that. I know that there was a encampment at one time, but I believe it's abandoned, but I haven't been out there for a while. So, um, so that'll happen anyway. And then if we decide that what we need to do is more, um, uh, fu- fuel reduction in that area, that would happen after that. So we're going to do the first thing regardless because we think that that's prudent, given the fact that they're there now. They may not move quickly anyway and we want to be able to keep fires from ha- having the ability to uphill, uphill as much as possible.
Yeah. So the fire break is, uh,
Fire break is number one.
Number one and, uh, and the butt rush is number two.
Yep, correct. And we don't have a timeline on the butt rush.
No, but I look, I went by saying that, so that butt rush is, is getting up.
Oh, it's bad. Well, and some of those encampments too, they use the limbs and brush.
They're burning it.
Camouflage, so the camouflages are tight. And so that's a huge fire danger.
Well, that's what's up with Lynne Skinner that somebody addressed today. Two people addressed that.
That one, that one.
And I, and I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll talk to, uh, the police chief about that so he can go to enforcement because I actually have taken pictures of it. So.
All right. Well, then we will, uh, in the, during this meeting, we're done. We got to go close session. Thank you.
Thank you.